Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
Are we good to go, Sherri?
Hey, welcome everyone to February Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Five. Would you all please rise and join me?
I.
Allegiance to the Five, United States of America, in the public which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. First on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. If there are any, would you please state your name and address? Come up to the podium. Seeing none, I'll move on to announcements. I will announce we had an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss real estate and some litigation. And we will be holding a brief executive session after the meeting tonight. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Board of Supervisors meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, escrow release of vouchers, the emergency services report, the building and zoning and building permits report, Public Works report, planning commission report, and Mr. Manager, I'll ask you to read the present report. Change the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The general fund has a balance of one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents. I weigh eight, one hundred and thirty thousand, three, eight hundred and thirty-four, twenty-three. Open space, one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. The park fund, a hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight, seventy-four. Equipment fund, fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and two cents. Highway capital, a hundred and forty-five, seven. Streetlight, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents. The general fund reserve is five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. The American Rescue Plan is zero. Open space, Manderfield, is zero. We're giving them the process to transfer that to a different CD. So it had to move over to the general fund. It'll be in next month's report.
Okay.
The sewage maintenance fund, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eighty-two dollars. The stormwater fund, one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and two cents. And the escrow funds, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty.
Okay, any questions from my fellow board members? Concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Moved.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Thank you.
So thanks to the Public Works guys for coming out and helping us solve problems several occasions. The guys with Salt Truck pointed out earlier.
Yep. That's for sure. Confirmed appointments, there are none tonight. And moving forward, committee reports. The first on here is Park and Rec. Mr. Dave Rice.
All right, it's Park and Rec time. Everybody loves that. All right, we got a twenty-twenty-five event scheduled. We have a couple on the calendar ready, so get your calendars out, your phones out, put them on the calendar. Fishing Derby is going to be Saturday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. So that is the second Saturday in April. We're the Liberty Girls, Liberty Trail Girl Scouts are going to have an Arbor Day event. Again, that's going to be Saturday, April twenty-sixth, so they're going to be planting some trees again, I would assume. September Fest, it's always a great day. Sunday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, feature film and fire have yet, bless you. Have yet to be determined the date, but it'll be in October of twenty-twenty-five. So those are on the calendar. Hopefully, I didn't see too many people writing those down, so we'll give them to you next month. Here we go.
Hey, Dave.
Mike.
It's on, it's on camera, so they can.
Oh, there you go. You can always come back and see. There you go. I like that. All right, gentlemen, I sent you guys a couple estimates for the shed, a new shed, and a couple estimates for gazebo. So we're still working on a park and rec, the dog park. We just got to finalize that and as far as the timing of such. So what we have is a new shed at twelve by twenty to put in place. I spoke with Greg and Seth as far as how that would, you know, work out as far as putting a new shed in place, migrate and all the old stuff, and then having the old shed removed. As far as the gazebo, we're looking to have a maintenance-free gazebo as well as a maintenance-free shed, so that way nobody has to touch anything for a good long time. So actually, in the one email, you could see the picture of the gazebo that we had. They're right around similar pricing. Looks like, I think they're, they're all right around the same price. But basically, those are what I'm looking for, for approval, so we can move forward, because there's about a two-month turnaround from purchase to being put in place. And that will put us April, May-ish timeframe. So I'd be looking for approval for those. And any questions?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
With the gazebo, where do you plan on putting it?
It is going to be down towards where that tiny little, I want to say it's a picnic table, and then there's a little overhang that's, needs to be replaced, down in that area, but not too close to where the trees would fall on it and, you know, damage it. So I already spoke through Greg, and we were talking about that as far as, you know, it's got to be out of that zone.
What about water issues?
Water issues as far as being too wet?
Yeah, the whole park is like a swamp sometimes.
Yeah.
And we know that. You're going to put it up on gravel or?
That is something that we can actually decide, and that's, I guess, the conversation with Greg and Seth, and see what we got to do if we got to elevate it, which would probably be a good idea to elevate it probably a foot. I don't know, you know, I don't think that, you know.
There is a swell.
Correct.
There is a swell that was cut in down there that goes on an angle.
It goes towards the pond, so, and that takes, it still gets wet, but.
It would be, it would be just this side.
We'll definitely walk around and make sure we have it in the right spot before it gets set. Like I say, we have a two-month, about a two-month turnaround on when they would, you know, have it built, and they would build it on-site, obviously, with a sixteen-foot.
Right.
Octagonal gazebo. So maintenance-free, again.
Planning on having weddings? Is this the gazebo?
It would be used for anybody that would be available, you know, that would want to utilize it for pictures, for ceremonies, for whatever, close enough to the walking trail, but yet far enough from any tree damage that was potential. So we're looking to do that. And like I say, the dog park, we're bringing that to you next month, where I can show everything on the park plan.
I do want to ask you.
Sure.
Because it's, it's important for the folks to know, the, the, the age of the shed that's over now. We talked about doing repairs on that shed for at least ten years.
Yeah.
That shed's at least twenty years old, if not.
Uh, this is my sixteenth year, and it was probably there when my oldest kids were there, and they're in their thirties. So, yeah. It's been there for a while.
Going to maintenance-free, I like. We won't have to worry about painting it or staining or the wood rotting, because it'll be red, right?
Yep. And there's going to be no little cutout for like any soda or vending machines, which is going to be a twenty-by-twelve shed that's going to be open, and it's going to have electric, obviously, lights, but just one or two outlets and a switch, turn lights on.
Sure. Okay. Satisfies me.
Cool.
Any concerns?
The shed big enough, twelve by twenty?
Yes, it's actually the same size, but in addition to the cutout. So.
So you actually have more room inside for storage?
Yeah, we'll gain a couple square foot.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
Uh, just an approval, so we can move forward to, for the purchase, the purchase order, or however the township is going to do that, so that way we could order it and get it approved, so we can move it towards the final destination.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made to move forward the new shed and the.
Gazebo.
Gazebo. It's been seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing a lot of work.
David, a couple more things.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. When Mr. Lippin did the treasurer's report, you have a really healthy budget. I'm glad to see you're buying the shed.
Yeah, it's, we've been planning for a little while.
Yeah, like a hundred thousand dollars. My question to you is, have your, has your group, the committees, have you ever thought about the capable courts?
That, that would be good. I don't, we'd have to talk about a location, because, yeah, because we're going to, we're going to, once we get done these two projects, and then the, the dog park, we're looking at that first park, once we get the new dog park, and then we're going to go retro, which is probably based on the finances of each year, probably have to be done next year. But basically, we can look at that, because I know it's up and coming, and I've never played it, which I'm kind of.
We'll get there.
I'm, I got to get there, yeah.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
The fact that you're making some, some large capital improvements, have you ever, or the group, have you ever discussed security cameras in the park?
We have, to a certain extent. It's a matter of how we can get them. So it would have to be either cellular, because the Wi-Fi does not connect there, or we'd have to get repeater, or something that would allow the signal to get over there to be that far down into the park. But yes, we have, we did discuss it at the last meeting, and we were talking about it. I mean, I have cameras in my house, I have trail cameras and stuff like that, and it's, yeah, it either, you either have cellular and, or you have Wi-Fi.
The report, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I wonder if we, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we're able to whether or not the Eric House actually has something we could connect to.
It would be a stretch.
Remnants from the old police station that something could possibly.
That would be a good start to at least looking to see what kind of coverage we could have.
On that.
You can probably get a repeater from here out to there, and then you can get it broadcast out.
Yeah.
Might not be the fastest, but it would.
Oh, it would just matter to snap a picture or two, or a short video, so, I mean, that would work. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for your report. I will, well, we had a motion made in second, we're all voted on, so we're good to go. Thank you. Moving forward, next on the committee report is the Conservation Committee. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I was not in the attendance at the last meeting we had in January. I was ill that night, so I am reporting. I may not have details if you ask me questions, but I can certainly get you answers later on. We are still working on getting those acreage ovals posted on those properties. They are now in the possession of Michael Schreymeyer, who is going to be taking care of that as the weather warms up. And he's very dedicated to making sure we get this done this spring. I believe Greg shared with you the large prop, landowner postcards that we're looking to mail to specified landowners in the community. A lot of developers are reaching out to people that own larger plots of land, and we want to offer them the opportunity to talk to us about conservation. So we're in the process of putting together a list, yes.
Is that it?
Yes, they're small, they're about five by seven, but that's what they look like, yes. So once you give us approval and you're okay with those going out, we're going to start working on putting those out. Karina really has written a great article for the spring newsletter, talking about our perilous problem of the ash trees in the area. And she does a nice little twist of bringing in some baseball history, so if you're a baseball fan, talks about the history of the ash trees and baseball bats. So it's kind of an interesting little twist of story. And the Conservation Committee will be setting up a tent at the April Fishing Derby. Once, now that we have a date, we'll get together and put together our information. We'll have a display of information for the community, a map. We typically put a map up, so people can see where conserved land is. People like to come and find their property and talk to us about it. Just continuing to get more and more community members interested in conserving their property. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I do, before you leave.
Yes.
You have a meeting in, in March, right?
Correct.
So there is a need for approval for this, it's a March meeting?
If we can have it, yeah. Yeah, if, tonight, so then I can go back in March, and I know Karina's already been working on a pretty good list, and we're trying to get those out as soon as possible.
Booze at the Fishing Derby in April?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So you would want to have.
Well, have those ready for them, too. Yeah, I have, I have, they're, they're very easy for me to order and have them printed as soon as we get the okay.
We should talk.
We should talk about it.
Yep.
Okay. And if there's any edits or changes, you know, feel free. I can make those very easily.
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. Don't lose your land at developers, and it explains the concept of keep, keep your acreage, keep your ownership, and get paid. Find out how the conservation easement can benefit you by contacting West Rock Hill Township for more information, and then its conservation easements are available, and gives the website address here for someone that might be interested in doing it. And the, the list that you have on here, the list that you gave us to mail out, just like, most of the properties are like twenty acres or more.
Yes, we're starting with the larger ones first, yeah.
Right. And then it explains on the back what a conservation easement is. So basically, most people in here have seen us do conservation easements throughout the township on various properties. Purchase the development rights so that developments can't be done. You get to keep your land, you still own your land, pay taxes on your land, but there are some benefits to it. As some people know, your school taxes could be frozen on large pieces of, of land, depending on the acreage, by doing that. So there is a benefit to to do it. I encourage everyone to think about it, whoever is interested in doing it, because it could be a benefit to them, if they want to live rural and they like their land, and they don't want to see development.
Yeah, and I'll just send Greg an email, and he'll get in contact with us. And typically, landowners come and meet with us at one of our committee meetings and learn a little bit about more, about how it works, how we go out and look at the land, and determine whether or not we're going to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And it's a pretty easy process. There's just a lot of technicalities that people need to understand and want to understand.
Is there any questions, concern from my fellow board members? Any changes?
I think it looks okay.
No, I think in light of the fact that a lot of people want land conserved as opposed to having development, I think that this is a good idea.
Okay.
Get them printed up as postcards and ask if anyone wants to hand out.
Yep.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, to move forward with this concept.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll get those together. Any other questions?
Just mention one thing which I have found from the first of the open space plan, is if you can get a good copy, maybe we can print one up for scan, and one of the old map of West Rock Hill Township. That's very effective at stopping people in their tracks. Nobody has to go, where's your house?
Yeah.
Oh, this was the chief's house, under thirty.
Yeah, historically, to see the difference in the changes, yeah. No, that's a good idea.
Thank you for, thank you for the report.
Thank you very much.
And I will, I will entertain a motion for approval of the Conservation Committee report.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commission reports. The first up on here is Chief, Penriddge Regional Police Department, Steve Dickinson. How are you?
Good, how are you? Good evening. Okay, have your January twenty-twenty-five activity report for the Penriddge Regional Police Department? Police Department responded to nine hundred and ninety-five calls for service in the month of January. Four hundred and fourteen of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township, five sixty-seven were here in West Rock Hill Township. Fifteen of the remaining calls were assisting our neighboring agencies. Police Department responded to forty-two traffic crashes in the month of January. Twenty crashes were reportable, twenty-four were non-reportable, with twenty occurring in East Rock Hill Township and twenty-two occurring here in West Rock Hill Township. Our crime data for the month of January, we had eight crimes against property, five crimes against persons, nine crimes against society, and then ten Group B offenses, which are your more minor offenses. So those reported crimes included in East, in East Rock Hill Township, two hit-and-run crashes, one simple assault, one criminal mischief, three reports of fraud, two reports of harassment, one, a report of possession of child pornography, one theft, and one trespassing. West Rock Hill Township, we had two hit-and-run crashes, a DUI crash, a report of an arson, one report of aggravated assault, two simple assaults, one criminal mischief, four drug complaints, two DUIs, one fraud, one harassment, an ordinance violation, and a report of a theft. Criminal charges that we filed in the month of January, we, there was twenty-nine of them. One was for operation of a vehicle without an inter, inter, ignition, yeah, ignition interlock, excuse me. Two charges of trespassing, four charges of possession of drugs, four charges of possession of drug paraphernalia, one disorderly conduct, one criminal mischief, two charges of arson, one charge of possession of child pornography, a charge of dissemination of child pornography, and use of a criminal, criminal communications device, two charges of underage drinking, one charge of harassment, an aggravated assault, a simple assault, a simple assault, a charge of strangulation, and five charges of DUI. Our other police activities in the month of January included three hundred and three traffic enforcement details. We issued a hundred and twenty-four traffic citations, a hundred and sixty-seven traffic warnings, conducted twenty-eight school checks, a hundred and fifty-five park checks, seventy business checks, and attend, officers attended or participated in twenty-nine hours of training. So far, for the month of, for, for the month, for the year of twenty-twenty-five, Police Department responded nine hundred and ninety-five calls for service, forty-two traffic accidents, thirty-two offenses were reported, twenty-nine criminal charges were filed, and twenty-nine hours of training were attended by officers. And that would be your January report.
Any questions for the chief and the report?
I do wonder other, other police activities. You still do house check, right, when people are on vacation?
Yes.
All you have to do is let the office know.
Call the office. There's a form to fill out. I believe the form is also online. If it's not, I'll get it online for you, and then you can submit it that way through email or through fax.
Thank you. Questions, but thanks to chief and all the rest of the force that came out with all the ice storm. I know you guys are busy as anything, but that was a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Proud of your service. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the chief's report as.
Moved.
Okay, your motion's been made by Howe.
Second.
Fallingwood. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. I just have it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda is the Joint Rec Authority report. Angela Goodman. Hello, Angela.
Hello.
Good, how you doing?
All right, let's see, the Joint Rec Authority held our monthly meeting, February fifth. All five board members attended, which is myself, Shelley Mikolos, who's the vice chair, Tony Buck, Secretary Lynn Saylor, the treasurer, and Don Crotamo. We did hold two, two executive meetings, one on February fourth at six, at six PM, and one on February fifth at six to discuss the conservation easement. All five board members did attend. There was no actions taken at that time. It was just discussion to talk with the solicitor about that. A motion was made and seconded, approved by all board members, members on the following minutes and financials for January meeting. The pool's future was the conservation, in regards to the conservation easement, and we'll plan on moving forward with opening the pool in May, since we're getting the easement, going along with the easement. We ruled on the season, the calendar, twenty-twenty-five calendar. We are waiting for the final, for Zumba, the classes out, and then we'll put that, we'll publish that. We ruled on ordering a new pump from Deep Run. We're going to have the blue line painted on the pool from Woods Pools. We're going to, we ordered the new zip line part, because the zip line broke, and we ordered a new part for that. The mower is being serviced by Trumpbowers Lawn Service in exchange for sponsors, sponsorship. We're going to be putting a sponsorship up for them. The fence at the basketball court is also going to be fixed. The pool cleanup days, March twenty-ninth, April twenty-sixth, and May seventeenth is what we approved.
Can you repeat them to me, please?
Sure. March twenty-ninth, April twenty-sixth, and May seventeenth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Camps that were approved, the dates from Coach White's, White's camp was approved. I don't have them dates with me, but we did approve the dates for his camps. Then we had some unfinished business we discussed, which was new hires. So we have, actually, it has increased. We have twenty applications for lifeguards and two for managers. We're still looking into that. We're trying to get some more, hopefully, get some more applications for managers to review. And we're hoping to start interviewing by the end of this month. Swim lessons, we're going to do two sessions for swim lesson, lessons this year, because it's been requested by parents in regards to that, as well as private lessons. Zumba classes, like I said, we're waiting for, excuse me, Zumba and yoga classes. Yoga classes are, we pretty much have that set in stone, so it's just finishing up with yoga classes now. I'm getting that scheduled. A snack stand is something else we're still working with. Shelley has been working with that. She, somebody did reach out to her in regards to the snack stand, so she will follow up with them. So we have the committees, the fundraising committee has several dine and donates lined up. They just have, have to settle on dates and stuff. We do have one with, that's going to happen on the Celtic Fest, the day of the Celtic Fest, we will be there. And Philly Philly is going to do a dine and donate that day as well for us. And let's see, we're looking for more volunteers to help with the events that we'll be holding. We're looking into doing some events also over in the pool grounds as well. We're hoping to be able to maybe do some things there. And our volunteer committee is also working on getting some notifications out to new homeowners as well, and reaching out to them to let them know, hey, this pool's here. If you're interested, come on over and enjoy the pool for the day. We had no public comments. We approved all the bills. And let's see, we adjourned at nine-ten. We will be holding, we held another meeting last night to kind of go over some things that we touched base with on this meeting. We will also be doing, holding two meetings for the next three months. So for March, April, May, we're going to be holding two meetings a month as well, kind of catch up on things and get things all organized. So, and the last thing that we'd like to ask is if the funds that have been budgeted for the pool can be released. So that's it. So if you have any questions.
I do, I do as well. Can I start out with one? The, the, the tree that fell on the fence that you said, was that turned into the insurance?
Yes, it was.
And you were compensated?
Yes, we were. Yep, that's why we're getting the fix.
Very good, very good. The next, the next question I have for you is, have you considered or have done a mass mailing for sponsorship, for people to purchase season tickets or anything like that? Kind of like we do a, a mass, like we put our newsletter out every year? Has that been considered or done? Because you did have some support.
Yes, we did. We were considering the mass mailing for the pool signups. We have not done that yet. Last year, we did do a mass mailing for sponsors. We had no luck with that at all last year. So going door-to-door, our volunteers actually went door-to-door and kind of got some sponsor, sponsors that way.
The next, the next question I have for you is regarding, you said that you had twenty, you're going to have twenty interviews or?
Twenty applicants we have.
Well, my concern is, is you're committing to opening the pool, and, and that's fine. I mean, that's what we want.
Yeah.
However, I want to make sure that the pool's going to open to contribute, to let the funds released, but you don't have the, everybody hired yet. Are you, you're pretty sure they're going to be hired, or?
Oh, yeah, a lot of them are returned lifeguards that have applied again. So we've reached out to them, let them know we're going to be doing interviews, so they're aware of that as well. So, yeah, we reached out to them just to make sure that they knew, we didn't forget about you. We're just, you know, we were waiting to, for the conservation easement to be settled first.
If you're done? No. I think David was.
I do. I have, yeah. When you talk about new hires, we're assuming that these people haven't gone to Giant or somewhere else and got a higher-paying job, or they're still available, even though they placed an application with you?
I would assume they're still available, only because, like I said, several, several of them already are returning lifeguards from last year.
And what about managers? You have two that are interested?
Two so far for managers, yes.
You're going to have a manager and assistant manager?
Yes.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Have you, do you have an article in the newsletter that's coming out?
Yes.
And so, yes, actually, Howe did that, thank you.
And for, I have two more questions. The pool cleanup day is twenty-ninth of March, twenty-sixth of April, and seventeenth of May. Are you, what are you doing to solicit help for that? I mean, are you?
We have.
Get the community involved, or just?
I was going to say.
Just not the committee members? It's got to be.
No, 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 it's not. No, I was going to say, we actually have a list that we've had through the past couple of years. So we've already emailed them, they're aware of it, as well as, we've been making sure we put something on Facebook every day, and we're trying to get some information posted in all the, in local businesses that we can post, too, to make them aware that, hey, the pool's here, we're looking for help and for volunteers. So we're trying to get, get it out as much as we can.
And one final question. We heard per month that there was a need for a, a pump, and it was going to cost six thousand dollars. We heard per month that there was a need for a, a, a pump and it was gonna cost six thousand dollars. And, and now I see that this says that the pump is gonna cost thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five. Is that? First of all, what is the price of the pump? The second question is, has it been ordered or is it yet to be ordered?
No, it has been ordered.
It has been ordered.
We've ruled and approved on that. So that has been ordered.
You put money down on it?
Yes.
Okay.
So the pump, it's, the original quote that we got, unfortunately, the gentleman missed some things that needed to be done. So he had to come back. So we actually ended up with a higher amount. Most of the bids were actually in the twenty-some thousand. So this was the lower one, but we were comfortable with what he was telling us needed to be done.
Okay. Mr. Sherman? Uh, I just wanted to quick double check and also at least fill in and mention that a member of the joint rec authority did send out by email invitations to current, to members from last year, letting them know that we are back up and looking at, that we are looking for uh, lifeguards and for managers. And it occurred to me that we uh, might be able to put out, put it out on the left, I feel signed, we have, there's a ten percent discount up until March thirty-first for memberships. If we can, we have enough letters, maybe we can put all pool manager meeting on the bottom of the sign.
Yeah.
I think we have one layer on the bottom.
If you could do that, it'd be great. Yeah.
Maybe we can get the cleanup dates on the sign too.
Okay. Yeah. I, I, I do want to respond to something that Howe just remarked. You, you said you had two applicants for, for managers. Why, why do you need two managers?
There's a manager and assistant manager.
And I'm, I'm, my question is, why do you need an assistant?
You need an assistant because if the manager's not there, you know, so, because they work different. They can't work the full time that the pool's open and they're gonna, the manager will need off time. So you have an assistant manager to fill in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I mean, this is kind of new in the last couple of years. I don't remember ever having two manager and assistant manager.
Right. Yeah, I don't know what they did in the past. This is what's been done now. Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just sharing.
No, I'm with you on that. Believe me.
Because I do look at, at costs of what you're, what, what your costs are and, and you being able to sustain this pool and make it run.
Right.
So that it's productive and, and people can continue to come there.
Yeah. And we're trying to keep the salaries competitive, you know, maybe a little bit more enticing to make sure we got help. That's the staff that we need. So.
And that's what came out to bite us a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Didn't have, we couldn't get enough people because packing shelves at Wawa or packing shelves at the grocery stores.
Yeah. You make more.
They make, they would make more than we did. And I think we, this, at this point, excuse me, at this point, previously, we had, a lot of the managers were working a summer job as a teacher or as a second, or we had somebody who's very good and organized, like our tax collector Suzanne Clark. So we're now looking at managers who are in their early twenties and still in college. So we do need a little bit, you know, less experience leaves more people to carry the burden.
Okay. Uh, and will that be all done, Angela?
Yep, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it very much. And uh, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the report.
I will, I will say hello.
Okay, motions been made and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Add them with the uh, for Holiday Houses on Instagram, Facebook, and West Rock Hill and those of our websites.
Yes.
And I think also on Google Maps.
Okay, moving forward, tax collector's report is next on the agenda.
Uh, Suzanne uh, could not make it tonight. Uh, she collected three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents and tax bills go out March first.
Questions? I'll, I'll uh, make a motion to accept the Mr. Lepin cut's report for the tax collector.
Motion's been made.
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Realize that we, we did not vote on this person.
We did not. We're gonna bring that up later. Okay? We're gonna, we, we will revisit that under old business after we talk with Mary, it's a solicitor's report. Okay? Um, next on the agenda is Angela's report. Mr. Steve Ballas.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda is the uh, Durstein's thirty-one fifteen Old State Road Land Development. We have representatives here tonight. The planning commission did make recommendation, conditional preliminary approval. I'll let the applicant make his presentation at this point.
Okay.
Sure. Pardon me. Good evening. Nate Fox from Obermeyer on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Ballas said, uh, we did get recommendation from the planning commission for preliminary final approval. Uh, and uh, the waivers, uh, by way of background, this.
Approval?
Preliminary final. Yes. Am I correct in that or?
I have a preliminary written down.
Alex, do you recall, forgive me if I misspoke, but I, was it preliminary only?
Preliminary only, and perhaps that was because there was the open issue of the um, road improvements and waivers. So my, my, my apologies. Um, so received recommendation for preliminary uh, and the waivers. Um, since the planning commission meeting, pardon me, we did, we did meet with staff to discuss the scope of the uh, roadway wave, or sorry, the, the um, off-site uh, contributions uh, in lieu of uh, some of the waivers. Um, and could we click ahead to the um, just, do you mind if I take the microphone for anybody who's unfamiliar? Uh, property is at the corner of Meeting House Road and Old State Road, also bounded by Route three oh nine and the Septa tracks. Um, it's a proposed hundred and four thousand square foot warehouse building to be used as a cold storage facility uh, by Durstein's. The property ownership entity is Benaya LP, but Durstein's will be the owner and operator of the facility. You can see we've got robust landscaping surrounding the property. Um, we took a lot of time to look at how this affects the neighbors. We've spoken to some of the neighbors as to their concerns and what uh, this will look like. Do you mind uh, moving ahead? There's a cross section that shows the elevations. Yep. So the property itself uh, has some significant slope. So at the top of the property, I believe this is is from Old State Road. Uh, the building's actually cut in um, to the property. Old State Road is significantly higher than the lower end at the track. So there's a significant amount of excavation and cut that has to go in. So the building will actually sit down uh, below Old State Road. And Meeting House Road comes down along the side where, where the entrance will be. Um, as far as the, most of the waivers request, and we'll go through those specifically. We're asking for waivers from improvements to Old State Road, which is a dead-end road. It's effectively been Shelley's driveway um, for a long time. Um, and instead of improving Old State Road and putting sidewalk along Meeting House, which we don't know that there's a, a demand for any pedestrians or really a place to walk. What we're proposing to do is improve from the intersection of Old State and Meeting House up to the end of the Wawa improvement. So the township will get the benefit of a fully improved cartway. Um, there are some pinch points in there. We have to deal with some existing conditions. Um, but we're gonna improve the cartway. We've gone through a scope of that. We presented a, a scope of what that would look like. So that'll be a, a benefit to not just this property owner, but anyone who would traverse Meeting House Road. Um, and that would be something in conjunction with the waiver requests. Um, we'd ask that instead of a typical fee in lieu, that my client would be allowed to do that instead of paying the fee in lieu. And I don't know that there's a benefit to either improving Old State Road um, or doing anything as far as sidewalk um, along Meeting House. Um, that's the general overview. I'm happy to go through particulars and, and the waivers, but do members of the board have any questions?
None at this time, other than we will let the, we'll let the determination on the, the uh, fee in lieu of and, and what improvements you've done on the manager and the engineer.
Sure.
Okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Any questions from my fellow board members at this point?
No, I spent quite a bit of time today reading volumes and volumes. Uh, very thorough. Steve, you have any comments you want to make?
No, I think um, I think Mr. Fox summarized it well. Uh, they did do a lot of extra effort to accommodate or address concerns of the adjoining property owners and, and added a significant amount of landscaping and bought trees on the property. Um, and I think essentially all of the site-related issues are resolved except for, you know, minor engineering items and some out, outside agency approvals. Of the, one major issue was that uh, the waiver of street improvements and what can we get accomplished effectively between the Wawa site and, and Old State Road on Meeting House. We have some constraint, physical constraints there and we're trying to work through those.
That's important that we do do that because um, the function, the maneuverability of these big trucks is very, very important, as you know.
Yep.
Uh, and there, there is a pinch point there that we all know about.
Yep.
Building can't be moved. Um, however, we only get one opportunity to make this right.
Yep. And Alex, what, what's our cartway width approximately on the, the improved area on Meeting House Road?
Today it's nineteen to twenty feet, but telling that, well, the current plan is twenty-four feet. For current surveying that property, we're putting paint markings down at what a twenty-four buck limit would look like, so that we can go up to the site with the property owner and look at the proximity of what a twenty-four buck wide road would look like compared to existing barns, but short of there being a problem, but those paint markings. Um, we intend to go to twenty-four feet. We need to shrink it a foot to get more separation. And we'll, we'll expand to the greatest extent that's reasonable with the pinch point of marks.
Yeah, and, and as far as Mr. Ballas' review letter, everything's a will comply, correct? And we don't, there's no additional waivers that would be sought. And I don't think there's anything open that would be left to talk about from a planning perspective or from a, a technical uh, matter that would concern you as an engineer, correct?
Yeah, everything's a will comply. I'll win the waivers and the third party.
I see that you guys did a lot of work and a lot of good speculations and kind of was the, was the planning commission's discussion of this. Uh, the thing is actually with the conservation committee here, just reminded me that about two years ago, uh, Bucks County Planning was interested in uh, doing some kind of rail and bike trail along the Septa line to avoid have, so that way you could basically ride under three oh nine, then ride under one fifty-two without having to get squished and trying to run across them. So, but I know that's, that's gonna be coming up in the future, but that was just the only, that's the only known unknown in.
Sure.
Home field terms that I can think of, that may be coming up later on, but most of that would be, would not be involved with where you're turning radius, radius, radius eye.
Well, Mr. Sherman, I wasn't quite done yet with, with the cartway. Because the cartway, the cartway is important to me because I do drive a big truck for a living.
Yep.
And, and Steve, uh, you know, a tractor trailer is, is eight feet wide with the mirrors. You're looking at ten feet. So two of them, one passing, one, one way and the other way, that's twenty feet right there. That's if they're touching. So it is very important that we try to maximize twenty-four feet at the minimum. Uh, I understand the, the restraints out there, but I I, I can tell you, I'm not gonna move forward with this plan unless we are proven that we can have safe, passable cartway. Especially when you're dealing with two, with big trucks like this. So I think, I think it can be approved or obtained, but.
All right. Well, that's why we came to the, to the agreement that they were gonna survey the work.
Yep.
Mark it in the field. I already talked to Bob Blum again, talked about it. I told him that's, you know, to expect to see your people out there. And if he sees marks on the road, that's what the marks on the road are gonna be. And then I would contact him again to talk to him about it in the field.
Yeah, I think it's, I believe it's the last uh, yep. So do you, do you mind walking up and, and summarizing that?
It's a little, it's a little hard to see um, this quality, but here are the two barns.
Yep.
That's, this is Old State Meeting House. This is goes to in the Wawa improvements. And what we intend to do is on the east side of the road is the barn that's actually tighter and that's only about two or three feet, I think, from the edge of road. And there's some existing shoulder paved up to it. So what we intend to do is hold that paving edge through the pinch point. Put all our widening, which would be four additional feet to go from the twenty foot to the twenty-four foot on the west side until we get through the pinch point of the barns. And then we would paint it and try and align a little bit better at the intersection. There's some existing trees on the west side that we're trying to stay away from. But if you know, there's also utility poles and I put some real fence on the side. So we're, we're currently actively surveying that to see how we should balance those. But up through the barns, everything's gonna basically on the west side with the Wawa driveway, additional four feet, get through the pinch point and then pivot and align through the intersection. So we're surveying, then we'll meet with Steve's office again to work through some details on how we can improve that intersection, maybe a little bit of extra paving around some of the radiuses and how we balance between the, the um, the two pinch points of the barn.
Okay, thank you.
But we, we really don't know for sure exactly how wide the road is gonna be as of this evening, right?
I've been.
You may.
I've been in close contact with Bob Blum about this, and just the engineer. And Bob said, look, Zach, gotta be so far from the barns and the trucks were based on tear to move up the, to move up the barn.
Sure.
I think he said about two feet, that's just two, twenty-four. I have no problem going as wide as you or Bob wants to. I always go a lot of, I agree with you.
Safety, safety.
Yeah. So I see no issue with twenty-four based on my personal Bob. I see no issue with twenty-four. I talked to engineer today again, so we need to spray paint on the road, call me, I'll drop and see Bob with Steve and Alex. Say, hey, look, here's the spray paint, here's your overhang. I do a twenty-four feet. I think they'll be fine with that. Does she guys know?
Yeah.
We're going for twenty-four feet.
Okay. I appreciate that.
So the minimum, minimum of twenty-four feet is what we would, what we'll be providing.
Okay.
Uh, Mr.
Thank you, Zach.
Do you have any other?
I want to see, where are we then? Well, anyone, where are we relative to presentation tonight in the, in the planning commission? I mean.
Well, you reviewed tonight and then direct me to prepare a resolution. Um, presumably they'd be going to the planning commission for final plan approval before your next meeting. I don't know how you wanna handle that.
Well, can we put, can we put wording in that would, if the, if the planning commission gives final approval? We could, we could vote and, and give preliminary, preliminary final here.
Tonight.
However, if the planning commission is not comfortable with it, then it, it, it does not. Yes, then it's just preliminary.
But they, they only gave us preliminary. I, I, I misspoke. So, and that was.
Correct.
We're asked, we're asking this.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna jump in front of the planning commission. I want the planning commission to be able to give their blessing on this in a public meeting where they're comfortable with final approval.
So, and then Mary would just update the resolution from preliminary to preliminary.
So it'll be ready to go the next, it'll be ready to go the next meeting, by our next meeting.
Sure. And the planning commission meeting this month is?
Second, second Tuesday of March.
Second Tuesday of March. So it'll be before the March meeting where the.
March meeting is the third Wednesday. So you, so you'll be, you'll, you'll know a week ahead of time. In the meantime, though, that, that cartway widening, that's.
That's, that's the linchpin.
That's the linchpin.
Yeah.
Okay?
And I think that's the main point of discussion for the planning commission. If we could walk in there and say, you have it surveyed and we all agree that we can do X, I don't see any issue.
Yeah, and, and we would expect that this would be memorialized in the resolution in the land development agreement that's recording its property. So we'll have multiple checks and balances to make sure that the twenty-four feet is, is done. And that would be part and parcel to our, our approvals.
I'm not being, you know, try not to be overly harsh, but uh, supervisors are all sort of once bitten, twice shy. Thanks to Penn Dot rebuilding bridges on Allen Town Road that are no longer, that are single lane over Ridge Valley Creek and Butter Creek. So we get to hear about why would they do that? Sure. Can't you think ahead of this? So we're trying to make sure that we're thinking ahead in every way possible.
No, and we, we completely understand.
Okay, so Mary, you need a, you need a motion and an approval.
No, you just need to direct.
Okay, so then I will direct you, we will direct you to prepare your, your resolution that way.
I will do that and I'll get it to you. Um, it won't stay on the agenda unless you agree to the conditions. So I'll go to you a week or so before.
Perfect.
Review it, then send it. We can be by email. It doesn't have to be anything very formal.
And, and we'll go to the planning commission then.
Yep.
Prior to the next supervisor's meeting, we'll bring this plan and we'll walk them through that. And we, are we comfortable representing to the planning commission? The board supervisors are comfortable with preliminary final based upon providing a twenty-four foot cartway. I wanna make sure I don't.
Board of supervisors comfortable with preliminary final if the planning commission.
Is comfortable. Yes, okay.
Yep.
Great. I wanna make sure I don't misspeak again.
Nope.
So, all right.
Because you're, you're being recorded.
Thank you.
Thanks for noting this here. Is that, will that be all?
Yeah, that's all. Unless, unless you have any questions for me. I don't know, Zach. Yeah, that's all. Unless, unless you have any questions for me. I don't know, Zach, if you had any, any further questions or any issues. So we're going to go to the planning commission. Provide the planning commission is comfortable with preliminary final will still be on the agenda in March uh with a resolution of preliminary final. Right.
That's, that's, that's the best that we can do.
No, I
under the circumstances instead of making you wait a whole nother month.
And we, that's important to us and we, we appreciate you working with us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep.
Take care.
And the second item on there, my agenda is the North Penn Water Authority detour where there are waterline work associated with uh, while having a reconstruction in the borough. Um, I believe it was copies of the detours in your packet.
Yep.
Essentially, uh, it's identical to what the borough had proposed for the sewer line work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but uh, North Penn is proposing it independently for their waterline work, which will not happen exactly at the same time as my understanding, but be coordinated with, with the sewer work. I'm not sure if anyone is present from North Penn to the invite.
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
Well, the sewer will go down one side, water will go down the other side, correct?
Right. Yeah.
And the sewer is going to be done first.
Generally because it's deeper, the sewer is done first and then the water falls on.
So the, so the road's going to be tied up a lot.
Yeah. And this is all work being done in anticipation or in advance of Penn Dot eventually doing their total reconstruction.
They did get proper notices because down there, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of uh dental eyes, bones down there and down, down Long Avenue. A lot of, a lot of people that go there every day. It's going to be heavily traveled. There's going to be a big inconvenience.
Right.
Okay.
So they're looking for your uh blessing of the
Okay.
Their detour plans.
Uh, I don't have an issue with it. If there, anyone else does have an issue, please uh signify now, otherwise.
One question which I didn't quite see is whether they're actually going to be cutting off that air onto, will you be able to sneak in long air onto Lawn Avenue or is that going to be closed off? Cause I think the borough line is just past air. You mean up? Heads up? It's a, okay, that's right. The sidewalk. Um, yeah, okay.
Right.
That's okay. I'm just trying to make sure we uh learn the lesson from Long Avenue from last time where everybody has all their mailboxes in the five gallon bucket of concrete. Of maybe we should have had these guys put the, put the mailboxes in before we paved everything.
Okay. So we need, we need a motion?
Yeah. So move.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Steve?
And the last item is authorization for um advertisement for paving bids. There's a list in your packet of the roads that will be included in this year's.
Okay. Yes. Okay. But before we do that, I want to, I want to discuss something and I want to bring up to the board here because I, I was bothered last year by roads that did not get paved that were awarded to a paving contractor because the weather got colder and they didn't get the paving done. Their fault, not ours. Therefore, our residents suffered because there's some roads that were not paved last year. What can we do to not allow that to happen? Can we put wording in that when the bids are awarded?
Yeah, well.
Have to be done by October first? Or thirty-first, whatever the date we pick.
We could put tighter language on the penalties for not getting the work done.
Okay, because the, the difference in the bid was two hundred and fifty dollars. And I know the, the roads would have been paved if the other company would have got the bid.
Which one of those are the pitfalls of public bidding? Yes.
I understand that, but I want to, I want to try to, I want to try to alleviate that.
Try to address that in the
Yes.
in this contract.
Okay.
Lowest qualified bidder who is timely. So.
Mr. Collin, would you have any concerns regarding that matter before we?
No.
Back on this road.
People in Thousand acre Road.
Yeah, trust.
Better road. So yes, it'll get done, but a year late.
And we're going with October thirty-first as the that's the standard regulation.
Yeah, we could put it, we, we could do, we could go like the beginning of school. So, you know, the end of August, we're doing it. We bid early enough that we could get done during school vacation.
That would be great. I don't mind if it goes into September, but surely it should be done before.
We'll, we'll use the, we'll use the end of August as the
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of uh twenty eleven, the October thirty-first snowstorm and nobody did anything and it every paving job was stuck halfway done.
All right. So
We need authorization.
Yep. I will make an authorization, uh, I will make a motion to, to uh advertise the bids.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to, if Mr. Molly, you have nothing else?
I have nothing else.
Make a motion to approve the engineer's report as presented.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, solicitor's report, Mary Everly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, there are four items under this solicitor's report this evening. The first is to authorize advertisement in a public hearing of um the electronic sign ordinance. You re, you asked me to draft this a while ago. The planning commission has recommended it. Basically what it does, it allows electric, electronic signs along Lawn Avenue between Farmer's Lane and Ridge Road, like in the hospital corridor, Ridge Road, Bethlehem Pikes State Road. Um, under the terms and conditions set forth in the zoning ordinance and the, the terms and conditions include things like how bright they can be and, and that kind of thing. So if you'd like this to be advertised for a um a hearing at your next meeting, let me know and I will do that.
One question that occurred to me is it might be worthwhile to add on Washington Avenue so that the ele- elementary school could have a sign with their upcoming stuff.
That's up to the board.
Mr. Collin, would you have any?
I'm okay with that.
And, and the pool.
Yeah. Okay.
Add Washington Avenue.
Add Washington Avenue, please.
Um, I might have spoken too soon about when we can have the hearing because it is the nineteenth, which means that your meeting in March will be the nineteenth and um it, that's not enough time.
So we're going to have to go.
It'll have to be April.
Okay. That's fine. Start it moving. Yep.
All right. So that I've got an authorization to advertise. Did you want to make a motion?
I made that motion.
I will second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
That also includes Washington Avenue, right?
It does.
Okay. We're good.
At the um at the last meeting, you tabled the approval resolution for CSAC Inc., which was a Mitulio Land Development on Forest Road. Um, because uh he was not happy with all of the conditions in the resolution. Um, he, his, his engineer worked with Steve. They worked through those issues. Um, they, they approved them. And um, we got an email to that effect. So if you'd like to adopt that resolution, you can do so by making a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-five oh five.
I've got a question for Steve regarding that matter though. We're going to be okay as far as the drainage and, and, and what's going to happen there for the future.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to work.
Yeah, those things didn't change.
All right. We're going to work that into a stabilized shoulder, new drainage swales and, and get it to tie into what's out there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So um, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye. Ayes have it.
And that's two oh two five oh five, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
And then the next item of the solicitors' report is another ordinance. Um, people who provide or entities that provide public water need to make sure that they have enforceable areas around the public wells where people can't discharge certain things or have certain activities. Um, that's every public water provider in Pennsylvania. Periodically are the pub, the people who provide public water in this township ask us to adopt or amend resolutions. This time it's PWTA who is asking us to um adopt an ordinance setting for standards for what can be discharged into the public, public sewer system and um around um the wellheads. So if we can have an auth, a motion to authorize advertisement.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made.
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye. Ayes have it.
I'll make actually where should.
Well, it's actually sewer. It's not water.
Uh, so concerned about what's going down the drain. Yes.
Um, and then the final item under the solicitors' report is um you've been working with a, an entity that owns property in the township to develop a conservation easement. Um, we are very close to a final agreement on the terms of the conservation easement. But I believe we have come to terms on the agreement of sale for the conservation easement. So to keep this moving quickly, um, you have the option of authorizing execution of the agreement of sale for the conservation easement um at this meeting subject to the attorneys working through the final details of the language in the conservation easement.
Okay. Any questions regarding that or I will entertain a motion for
I'll make that motion.
That motion's been made. I will second the motion. It's been second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it.
And then for the minutes, that motion would be to authorize the execution of the agreement of sale for conservation easement subject to the attorneys for both parties working through the final issues of the conservation easement.
And that's we're good?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
We agree to agree to.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve Mary's report as presented.
I'm moved.
That was second.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving forward, manager's report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, I have one item. We have a request from Toll Brothers. Um, they have a development below the hospital there. Um, they are requesting to move topsoil outside of the township, which is uh, not allowed under our saldo and it's only up to the board of supervisors whether or not to allow that. Um, there's an Eric who's here uh here coming to speak on it.
You may. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Yes, thank you. Um, as Mr. Lippincott said, I'm uh requesting to remove topsoil from the site. Uh, we currently, we have approximately ninety-six hundred cubic yards on site that was stripped. Um, it's going to take approximately sixty-two hundred cubic yards to rehab the site for, which would leave uh thirty-four hundred cubic yards to be removed. It is my understanding that we are to offer any excess topsoil to the township prior to it being removed from the site. And the agreement also states that it is up to the township engineer that if we could move, we could remove topsoil if it's not used for, by the township.
Correct, but it is up to the supervisors where we allow you to move it out of the township.
Yes.
So what I would suggest is that we um, we allow the manager and this engineer to work out the detail with you on, on this process.
Understood.
What was, what was the volume?
The uh
Cubic yard again.
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four is going to be in excess after rehab.
I would like the engineer um to look at the quality of the topsoil and then make a determination with the manager on, on what, what path to take. But I would be comfortable with what the, the staff works out with you.
Sounds good.
I am familiar with the site.
Yep.
Um, it's below the hospital.
Yes.
Down there on the right hand side.
Correct.
When would this, do you have any idea what your timeline is?
Uh, as soon as uh I get approval to remove any, that if the township does not need it anywhere else.
I'm good with that.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
You have his name, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Contact information?
Yes.
Okay.
We're bringing contact.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Well, that being said then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the manager's report as presented.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved inside.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is old business and I want to bring this up very first because um, we do have to discuss it. And this is regarding the Holiday House pool and the allocation, the yearly allocation that we provide. As I stated in your report, um, it is my concern if we are going to release the funds that the pool be open. Uh, and you, you've committed to open the pool. I don't have an issue myself releasing the funds, but I will say the pool must open. Um, if it doesn't open, then I would expect the funds to be returned. So that being said, I will make a motion to release the thirteen thousand dollars that we generally allocate to the pool so that they can move forward with their plans to open the pool up this year. Any questions or concerns regarding?
I prefer it was a month from now, but I will um, I'll, I'll
Well, speak, speak.
No, I, I just, when I look at the things that still have to happen as far as the hiring, um, and the interviewing and it's, it's not, it's not a slam dunk. It's pretty close to being a, a done deal, but it's not done. But with the caveat, you said, if it doesn't happen, money comes back, I'm good. Release the funds.
Okay. So I made a motion. Do you second it?
Seconded.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Before we vote, before we say aye on anything, I want to make sure that, that, and, and you, and you do understand this. It's very important to think about how you're spending that money and what you're spending it on. Needs instead of wants, till you get up and running and you try to get the public involved and, and, and getting you support. Selling more tickets, season tickets. That should be a big priority in my opinion, but you know, you're running the pool. So motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. You got it.
Lippincott, write a check.
Jerry, Jerry wrote the check.
All right. Okay.
I'll sign it.
Now, I do want to bring, I have one other thing in, in old business and, and this has been, this has been going on for quite a while. And actually, Mr. Shermer had reminded me about it because this is something that I worked very hard on over the past ten years and couldn't go anywhere with it after I spoke with Senator McElhaney. I had Paul Clymer involved and I had some, some other people involved in the township to, to fix a problem that we have. And we actually have a resolution in the township that, that does not allow us to make this one lane bridges on Allentown Road, two lane safe passable bridges, which is up in Milford. And I want to bring this discussion to the table because I think it is important that the bridges be changed to two lane safe passable bridge. That, that was put in place by a previous board uh and it can be taken out. However, as I went through all the work, countless hours of, of, of meetings uh, with the Senator McElhaney and with Paul Clymer, I only learned later that there was a resolution prohibiting that. So it takes the act of two supervisors to, to do away with the resolution so that the planning could be done in the future to, to replace the Butter Creek Bridge with this two lane safe passable bridge, which is up in Milford where Campbell's Dam used to be. And then also the one there um by the cemetery, just below the churches. It could be done. The work was done so that there was enough room to do it without moving any graves. But until we get the resolution removed, the, the one that's in place right now, we, we can't proceed on changing safety. And I know a lot of you have sat here and listened to residents complain about the backup of cars at those two areas and, and the hazard that we have. If this was a township road or a back road, I would not even consider this. However, that being a Penn Dot Road, which is a state road, this is important that we have safe passable passage because two trucks, as you know, the, the width of the truck and then the mirrors. You can't even pass two cars on those bridges. So uh, the discussions are, I would like to remove the resolution, but I wanted to bring this up publicly. I don't know how the two fellow supervisors feel about it. Um, but it sounded like Hal did bring up a point that maybe something should be looked at. Any question or comment or discussion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, David.
Um, I, I think we have to be careful what uh we wish for. And I say that because there's been so many complaints from the public about uh tractor trailers on that particular road. And yeah, the bridges are an issue with all traffic, but if you remove the bridges and make them dualings and there's no guarantee when that might happen in the future. I understand that. You're going to have so much traffic on that road with tractor trailers that we can't control now. It's going to get worse and the residents on that road are going to be more upset with tractor trailers than they are about the slight slight traffic calming inconvenience of the of those bridges.
Duly noted. Uh, I will say in defense to to my concern, the safety of the motors is is more important. Uh, and as far as the tractor trailers go, we did take steps and we have signage there that no tractor trailers are allowed on Allentown Road that are over 45 feet. It is a Penn dot road.
Right.
So public can can travel on that road. Uh, I will, Chief, you have your hand up in the air?
I just would add, I don't believe that that sign is present on Allentown Road. It's not because uh Mr. Lippincott, now we had a discussion in a previous meeting about this. Mr. Lippincott, I did reach out to Penn dot about that because I drove Allentown.
Okay.
From 663 into the township and the only sign on that roadway is at 663.
Yes, right, right over square.
I Craig and I spoke and we spoke with Penn dot. We asked Penn dot to put up more signage. I don't believe they did that as far as I know. The other thing I would caution about is the infrastructure of that road in general. You're gonna start opening up truck traffic. This, the majority of our crashes that are on Allentown Road are vehicles going off the road because the road's not lined up.
Correct.
And the, yes, while those bridges do occasionally result in traffic crash, I don't see that the I would just caution that the roadway itself is also a little bit hyper. I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just making that suggestion to you that that just to be aware of that. If that if we do make those bridges wider and it opens up the truck traffic, it could cause more.
I I do appreciate your comments on there and I have I share that current. I'm not making, I'm I'm not making the suggestion to open up the truck traffic. I'm making the suggestion for safety of of the general motors that that travel the road now. What I've learned and watched and witnessed with the one up in Milford Township, that functions very well and that's that's the same road. You're only talking a couple of miles up the road. I don't even think it's two miles really. Probably a mile and a half from from Butter Creek. So it's just a it's just a thought to improve safety in the township so that we can um try to alleviate some of the the bottleneck that's happening there. Of course, it does take a motion and a second in order to change things. I'm I'm just merely bringing up the discussion now.
Okay, I'd like to continue with that discussion. Um, it's like when the road in front of your house has not been repaid for five or seven years and all of a sudden it gets repaid, comes a raceway and I think if you take those traffic calming bridges out, even though they're, I think, um, they lend a lot to the community just because they're stone bridges. But if you take those out, I can't imagine the traffic that you're going to have and I'm talking about increased truck truck traffic, but the speed of the cars and above the twin churches, above Ridge Valley, that the sharp curves, the, I mean, Penn dot's got wall to wall signs. Um, I just don't see that making you talk about traffic safety. I don't see that ma taking those bridges and making them two lanes doesn't make that any safer.
Well, the the what would make it safer is the fact that the cars ain't backing up at the bridge. The S turns are still the S turns. They've been there. They're not anywhere near the bridge. They're they're above it and that is marked suggested speed through there. And as I as I talked to a Penn dot representative today, that that road, Penn dot road there, that could be, that could be marked a little better possibly. And some things could be done in order to improve the safety there. Uh, of course, Hal, your input or your thoughts would be welcomed.
Well, my my first thought is that if the if the ditch doesn't get you and the curve doesn't get you and the bridge doesn't get you and the trucks don't get you. But my first idea would be that it's a good idea, but it's something to get some feedback from the residents and get some feedback from Penn dot to see what else can we do on this? Because I know that there are plenty of people who've caught air going over Butter Creek and end up in the fence or end up on top of the mailbox and all sorts of other mistakes from those. But the those of you, everybody's got good points and I don't have enough information to figure out how to stack all those points like Jenga to come up with which one is going to be balanced more and which one is going to make the most people happy and the least people annoyed. Because no matter what we do, we're going to be pretty close on that, I think.
Someone's back, question in the back.
Yep, Kevin? Yes. Name and address, name and address, please.
Uh, Kevin Deets, 1420 Ridge Valley Road. I actually live in between both bridges and I'm a lifetime resident there. Um, I understand both what you're saying, but the account even like even the chief was saying, but when a turnpike has an accident, the turnpike's closed, that road is a parking lot. And for emergency vehicles, which it did happen two years ago when the turnpike was closed and emergency vehicles trying to get through there and and people are blocked going this way and people are blocked going this way. I think personally, it would be to the residents' best bet only because I live there and I don't like the traffic that comes there now because when I was a kid, I could ride in the circle in an intersection area. I can't do it now. But I think opening it up to two lanes would be a benefit to the community. Only because if there's an accident, it's going to be a problem because you cannot get traffic moving fast enough and it backs up for miles. You know, and like you said, Milford, it proves a point. Milford Bridge is now two lanes. You don't see any backups. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was just trying to, as a resident living there.
Thank you. Okay, so um thank you for the comment. Your your opinion then is that we we um we tabled, we don't, we don't act on anything at this time?
Yeah, I think we should uh start asking the neighbors and people along Allentown and the engineer and the chief of well, what do you, what do you see? What can we do?
We have had a lot of input from neighbors. We have had a um Doug Coler was here complaining about that issue here a couple of years ago about the about the issue and what we were going to do about the issue of the thing. So but anyway, uh, it it does require a second vote to change it. And it doesn't appear that that's in the process right now. So that being said.
I think we should take a look at the, I'm curious, just go back and look at the resolution, look at.
Well, the resolution is very clear.
Yeah.
But it's very clear. It can't be without without the supervisors changing it. You can't can't do anything to improve them. So, okay. We will table that at this time till we get support, second support for that matter. Moving on, do either of you two gentlemen have any old business?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
New business?
I don't have anything.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Wonderful. I will entertain a motion for adjournment into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, second. Motion's been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.